I will again welcome everybody to the City Planning Commission. I will note that we are joined by a number of commissioners in the room, Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin, Bozorg, Osorio, Cerulo, Dweck, Kurmani, and Rampershead here, and Commissioner Gold and Marine on Zoom. We have a couple of votes to kick us off, starting with the Reform Temple of Forest Hills. Then we're going to have public hearings on a couple of applications from DCAST, the city's Department of Citywide Administrative Services, starting with a new community board office near Washington Square Park, CB2, as well as a new roadway construction at Pratt Avenue in Baychester. And then we will hear from the public on two proposed apartment buildings in Midwood, which together would create about 250 homes, about 60 income restricted in a neighborhood with a very low level of housing production in the city's most populous borough. So that's my quick summary. And before we get into the public meeting, I'm going to call a very quick special review session for the commission. We recently certified an item which was missing a document. And so we will explain, Ryan will explain to you the dynamic. I will ask unanimous consent to add it to today's agenda for recertification. Ryan, will you explain the dynamic here?
Certainly. So we recall the Cole Street development that was presented to the commission on November 28. And just for the record, it's ULEUR number 220443MMR. And this was a proposal that would enable development of 48 two-family homes and five single-family homes for a total of 101 residential units in the Richmond Valley neighborhood of Staten Island in Community District 3. It was presented along with some South Richmond actions and was certified. The issue we had was we did not have an alteration map for the mapping action, which is the official map that needs to be signed by the Borough President and an engineer showing the new streets that's being proposed. And because we didn't have that in hand, we did not have a complete application and so therefore didn't adequately certify it as complete. And so we're here just to ask for recertification. If there's any questions, otherwise we can...
Well, first, let me seek unanimous consent to add this item to the agenda today. Are there any questions, comments, before I ask for said assent questions? Okay. All those in favor of adding this item to the special meeting today, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The chair here is unanimous consent. Thank you. The item is added. Are there any questions about the substance of the item on Cole Street, the alteration map, which we now have in hand, signed by all appropriate parties? Seeing none, this item is now certified, Ryan. Thank you very much. We will now move on to, we're going to close the special meeting and move on to the public meeting of December 14, 2022. Madam Secretary, I'd ask you to go ahead and get us started today.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting, held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, December 14, 2022. I will now call the role. Chair Goradnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Here.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Here.
Commissioner Carwell is absent. Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Gold, I believe we have on Zoom.
Here. Here, yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodrich is absent. Commissioner Kurmani.
Here.
Commissioner Marden is on Zoom.
Confirming on Zoom. Yes, confirming on Zoom.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershead.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, November 30, 2022.
Thank you very much on the minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 30th. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chairman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Minutes are approved.
Scheduling, calendar numbers one and two. We have resolutions for adoption scheduled on Wednesday, January 4, 2023, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC Hearing Room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage Portal.
Thank you very much. That's right after the new year. We'll come ready to go on the resolutions. I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page five. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number three. Breckner sites rezoning city map change, CD3, C210301MMX, and the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning Breckner sites rezoning and city map change. For a favorable report on calendar number three, Chair Goradnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Aye.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Kurmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Can we call again? Yes.
Commissioner Osorio. Commissioner Rampershead.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number three. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers four and five. 446, 448 Park Avenue rezoning, CD3. Calendar number four, C210332ZMK. Calendar number five, N210333ZRK. And the matter of an application for zoning map amendment and zoning text amendments concerning 446, 448 Park Avenue rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers four and five, Chair Goradnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Fred.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Kurmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershead.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers four and five. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers six and seven. Reform Temple of Forest Hills rezoning, CD6. Calendar number six, C220274ZMQ. Calendar number seven, N220275ZRK. And the matter of an application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Reform Temple of Forest Hills rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers six and seven, Chair Goradnik.
Would I?
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozorg.
Yes.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Kurmani.
Yes.
Commissioner Marden.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershead.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers six and seven. The next part of the public hearing is the, next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page seven.
Great. Thank you very much. We are going to ask those two who are here testifying to limit their remarks to three minutes unless they are part of an applicant team. And I'm going to ask you, Madam Secretary, to call the first item of the day.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number eight. Manhattan Community Board Two Office Space. 3 Washington Square Village, CD2. Public hearing and the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning Manhattan CB2 Office Space, 3 Washington Square Village.
Great. Thank you very much. On behalf of the applicants, we have Xavier Carrera, Chris Grove, Nicole Pavez, and Janine Keely. And I believe they are going to be presenting by Zoom. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. And as soon as you all are ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Janine Kylie. I'm the chair for Manhattan CB2. We're in the process of hiring a new district manager, which is why I'm presenting today. Next slide, please. I want to give you an overview of CB2 Manhattan. We serve the neighborhoods of Greenwich Village, Soho, NoHo, Little Italy, Chinatown, Hudson Square, and Ganzavort Market. On 14th Street to the north, Canal to the south, Hudson River to the west, and Bowery, 4th Avenue to the east. The community board plays an important advisory role with land use issues, zoning, city budget, municipal service delivery, and lots of quality of life issues affecting our district, as well as applications for liquor licenses, landmarks, and cannabis licenses. We are one of the busiest community boards in the city and serving the local residential population, the university student populations of NYU, Cooper Union, the New School, local businesses, and many local national and international visitors who come to our neighborhoods for our museums, parks, historic districts, and shopping. So the blue box is, shows where the CB2 office is located. It's on one of the NYU superblocks. It's centrally located in the district. It serves four staff members. Me, the board chair, community board members, occasional interns from local high schools, volunteers, and constituents. You enter 3 Washington Square Village on what would be the extension of Worcester Street via Bleecker Street between LaGuardia Place and Mercer. This is a residential building with a 24-hour doorman and ground floor commercial spaces. And our office hours are currently Monday through Friday, 10 to 6. Next slide, please. CB2 has operated out of this office site for 32 years since 1990. The proposed site, as I noted, is centrally located in the district, easy for people to get to and from, and it's ADA compliant. Almost every subway line seems to stop by, as well as many, many bus lines. So it's a great location. Next slide, please. The office space includes an open layout with three workstations, two offices, a staff pantry, copy station, a tiny waiting area, and a larger conference room sufficient for our needs. The conference room is equipped with AV capabilities to host hybrid committee meetings and smaller in-person meetings. This conference room is so critical, given the limited number of nearby locations where we can currently hold public meetings. Community groups that coordinate with CB2 also use this space for meetings, which is another wonderful resource. And in the last year, NYU reinstalled glass doors that opened to an outside fenced-in area. Next slide, please. The current office use, due to some recent building-wide plumbing problems, NYU will be repairing some damaged floors in the main office later this month. And we're also hoping to work with our landlord to get some new bookshelves and storage cabinets in the open office spaces. And those were needs identified by the staff. If you go to the floor plan, the last slide, you can see you enter 3 Washington Square Village at the doorman entrance, and you go down a long hallway. And at the end of the hallway, there's two separate entrances, one into the office and one into the conference room. And that's it. We hope you approve the CB2 lease. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Let's see if there are questions from the commission. Sounds like a pretty straightforward one, perhaps one of the most straightforward we have seen. Thank you very much. And Madam Secretary, I see keel on here, which is, must be an error, correct? Okay, great. Is there anybody else wishing to testify on this item from the public? Janine, thank you very much for your presence here and also for your service on the board. We know how hard a job that is and how much work you have to do. So we thank you for what you do in service of Community Board Two and the entire city. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And thanks to the whole team at DCAST who walked me through this process.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. So with that, and seeing nobody else interested in testifying on this item, we will close the hearing on calendar number eight, the Manhattan Community Board Two Office Base. And we will open the hearing on the next item. Madam Secretary, would you do us the honor of introducing this one?
Borough of the Bronx, calendar number nine. Pratt Avenue retaining wall and roadway reconstruction. CD12, C230060PQX. And the matter of an application for an acquisition concerning Pratt Avenue retaining wall and roadway reconstruction.
Great. Thank you very much. I have an applicant team here which includes the following. Megan Porter, Hayden Benjamin, Ron Bramson, Robert White, Lone Murray, Ivan Estevez, and Carrie Lowe. And as soon as you all are settled and ready, we would love to hear from you. You as an applicant team have 10 minutes. This team is joining us by Zoom as well, and we're going to get them set up. And then as soon as they're ready, we will start the talk.
My name is Hayden Benjamin. I'm a director with the Capital Program Engineering at DOT. I'm here today with Ron Bramson, project engineer. We may be joined by the interim Borough Commissioner, Keith Cobb. So we're here to put forward our application to facilitate the reconstruction of the Pratt Avenue retaining wall and reconstruction of the roadway. This project encompasses the mapped segment of Pratt Avenue between Needham Avenue and Marolla Place and the rear yards of two private properties outside of the mapped right-of-way. The purpose of the project is to reconstruct the retaining wall that supports Pratt, the built proportion of Pratt Avenue and to do some related infrastructure improvements and all incidental there too. This time I'll introduce Maria Centeno from DDC, who will introduce the rest of the team. Thank you.
I'm looking for a Maria, we don't have a Maria signed up from DCAST. We have a Carrie Lowe.
Okay, and then I'll hand it over to Rob White. Rob, can you take over, please? Sure. Can everyone hear me? Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. All right. So the applicants are the DDC on behalf of DOT, DCAST, and DEP. Capital Project is Pratt Avenue reconstruction. And the project corridor is a mapped segment of Pratt Avenue between Needham Avenue on the south and Marolla Place on the north. And but it also includes the rear yards of two properties that are outside of the mapped right-of-way. And the project purpose here is really to replace a failing retaining wall that needs to be reconstructed. It supports Pratt Avenue. It was built, I believe, in the 80s or 90s, and it's suffering some structural decline. Next slide, please. So this gives you a plan view of the project corridor. It's comprised of the Pratt Avenue corridor. There's, it's only a half-built street. The residences that you see, I believe it's the west side, north is to the left. The residences were built on the west side, and half the street was built. It's a 60-foot wide map street. The other half of the street is unbuilt, a retaining wall. There's a lot of grade changes. There's a retaining wall that was constructed when the original development was built. And that's the history of how this sort of street was constructed in years. Next slide, please. So the site conditions, this gives you just an overview. There's an existing retaining wall that's aligned along the lot 492. It encompasses lots 12, 15, 17, and 101. It's a little hard for me to see on my home screen, but hopefully you can see that better on your screens. Inspections were done by the city a few years ago and identified some pretty significant stress and damage. I've got some photos later that'll show you that. As a result of that, there's been a lot of erosion of the street service and irregularities, and you'll see the damage that's been ongoing. The city DOT has had to do, because of this, emergency repairs that have included installing I-beams and other measures as a temporary fix. The objectives of this project are therefore to bring that whole street and the retaining wall up to a state of good repair. There are a number of residents there who feel unsafe because of the condition, and this would provide those residents with a renewed sense of safety and a safe operating street. And hopefully will avoid the need for any future emergency repairs as this historically been. Next slide, please. So these are, this is just five photographs that show you, I think, pretty clearly what's going on here, the slumping and the erosion in the street, the deterioration of the street. And this is the only way in and out. It's a dead-end street. So makes it all the more important that the street be operational for both day-to-day access for the residents, as well as emergency access. And historically, I believe this need was brought to the attention of the DOT, also by the fire department, when they had a call to this street. Next slide, please. So some of the design details here are to selectively demolish portions of this old retaining wall and then reconstruct the new retaining wall approximately six feet outside of the face of the new retaining wall. DEP identified a need for about 300 feet of new sewer from Pratt Avenue to Marolla Place. So that will be built in the right-of-way, but the non-street portion of the right-of-way. And once the retaining wall is repaired and the sewer is installed, reconstruct Pratt Avenue to the city's design standards, regrade it, replace the manholes, resurface it, and provide new sidewalks as necessary. Next slide, please. This is just a detail of the property owner conditions. There's a number of property lots, I should say, area, lot area within the street right-of-way that needs to be acquired. So there's two types of acquisitions here. One is a damage and acquisition map. For street right-of-way acquisition, there's about 11 parcels, the largest of which is 11, and that would be acquired to install the proposed sewer. That's about 5,500 square feet of area within lot 11. Next slide, please. Once, and then there's the ULEUR portion of this, which is the non-right-of-way acquisition, which involves lots 12 and 15. It's the rear yards of two privately owned properties outside of the right-of-way. And the purpose of the ULEUR acquisition would be allow construction access so that the city can go in and repair this retaining wall. The retaining wall goes down the street and then bends to the left through the rear yard of these properties. So the construction, the proposed acquisition would allow the construction access to do the repairs. And then for the future and in perpetuity, we'll allow the city to maintain and inspect this wall to ensure that it's functioning properly, clean, cleaned and repaired as needed. That would be the objective of this purpose, this acquisition that's before you. And it's a 25-foot wide easement across the rear yards of lots 12 and 13. Next slide, please. This is just a detail of what I just stated. Just gives you, it's a survey map that shows you the conditions here. There's no structures. It's rear yard occupied by lawn and shrubs. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of the project schedule from design to construction. We're currently in the street, you know, in the ULEUR and street acquisition phase or pre-construction phase. We are hoping that if we're successful, ULEUR will be completed early next year. And then the city DDC will continue to move forward with its street acquisition entitled vesting and easement purchases through the course of 2023 and 2024, where there will be additional public hearings with property owners and the final acquisition of the properties. The design completion is scheduled for June of 2024, and then construction will start in June 2025, take about two years, and be completed in June of 2027. Just duration of construction, as I said previously, is about two years. The construction sequence here is to prep the site, get it ready for work, and, you know, put up the necessary barriers, install the new DEP storm sewer, excavate the trench, install and test, and backfill the trench. Construct, then followed by construction of the replacement wall, which will involve excavation and drilling to put in the supports, and then put in the new wall panels, backfill, and regrade the street so that Pratt Avenue has a common sort of street grade, and then replace the curved sidewalks, final repave, and so that's an old new street. And then the project would be closed out, move the equipment, demobilize. I don't want to go back to the other slide, but there is additionally, the unbilled portion of Pratt Avenue would be used for the construction staging. Next, next slide, please. Next slide, slide after this, please. Okay. So as you can see, you know, this is, there's a lot of sensitivities here in terms of the residences and the existing uses. There's a hotel use also. It's common practice for DDC to have a community construction liaison to coordinate with the property owners during construction. I'll also point out, it's a dead-end street, so there's going to be access issues, both for day-to-day access and emergency access. And people will need to be, understand that to ensure that they don't have any concern or to hear their concerns as the project moves forward. And these just list what are common practices for DDC in terms of working with property owners to identify, resolve, and proactively address any issues. And this is all pre-construction work that would be done in coordination with these property owners. Next slide, please. This is just more detail on what I had explained previously in terms of the steps of construction. If you have any questions on this, we'd be happy to answer them here. But I think there's probably just more detail here than I need to go into at this time. But these are some of the step-by-steps of site prep, installing this storm sewer, installing into retaining wall, the street reconstruction, and then a final finish. Next slide, please. Hello?
Yes, thank you. We're at time. But that's okay. We got a couple of questions for you, which may list what you have left to say. So let me jump right in and we'll go for it. And I also have questions from some colleagues, including the vice chairman. So just to kick this off, you, the city has been operating under a temporary easement to do maintenance work on Pratt Avenue for some time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
For how long?
That's a question I would have to defer to DOT.
DOT?
That is something I'll have to check into and get back. I'm not sure how long that easement is.
Okay.
I believe it's about five years, but I would need to be confirmed.
Okay. The project that you're proposing, as I understand it, is a 24-month project to do a significant amount of work, to do all the things that are on the screen here. The question that I have is, why are you not seeking another temporary easement as opposed to a permanent easement on this site?
I can help answer that question for you. So the temporary easement is actually on lot 101 and not on lot 12 and 15. The permanent easement is being, is for private properties that extend to the other side of the wall. And so I believe a permanent easement would be needed for the long-term maintenance of the, to be able to access the entire wall.
Is there no temporary easement behind sites 12 and 15, the ones that seem to need the most work at this point?
There's no temporary easement for 12 and 15 at the moment. And it, as you, as the, the map will show, that lot 17 is right in the middle of lot 101 and 12 and 15. So that would be the access to the wall that is city-owned. And so to the, if you're accessing that way, to the left is lot 101, and that you can currently access. And to the right is lot 12 and 15, which would be the rear yards of the private properties to access. And that would be needed to access the full wall.
Okay. Okay. So the answer on temporary versus permanent is the need for more continued access after this construction work is done. Is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Because once the, once the wall, the replacement wall has been installed, the city will then have a mechanism to go in, do regular inspections, clean the wall, maintain it in perpetuity.
Okay. And presumably you have done some initial outreach to the property owners of interest here who would need to grant the city said easement?
Yeah, DOT can expand upon what I'm about to say, but there's been a number of meetings, community meetings. Property owners showed up at the, at the community board level in the land use committee back in October, I believe it was. And we've done our outreach in terms of notification letters. At of each of the meetings along the E L R process and we've received uh notifications of receipt back from one of the property owners. The other property seems to be.
But I'm sorry, you say that last sentence one more time, I just couldn't, you faded out at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. There are two property owners. One, we have received uh certified receipts, but the other property, I believe, is vacant, the building is safe. So we have not received any any certified mail receipts back from them.
Oh, I see. So one of them, you got a certified mail receipt saying that they had received your communication. And from the other, you have not gotten that certified receipt, is that what I heard you say?
That's that's correct. We've sent it at least four times.
Okay, so the extent of the conversations here are formal and by mail with return receipt as opposed to. Sit down and discuss the uh the details of this, is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, um, and.
Here at prior prior meetings with DOT.
I'm sorry, I could not hear what you said.
Sorry, I'm saying I I believe at least one of the property owners that are subject to the U L E R application, as well as other property owners along Pratt Avenue. Have showed up in a number of meetings with DOT, DOT historically.
Okay, um, and if we grant a uh permission for an acquisition here. For an easement to allow for the construction work and ongoing support. Um, uh, and this is really a question for uh the lawyers present and that are not me. Um, is would that con- that would also include a temporary ease, acquisition of a temporary easement? So we're, we would be giving you the the ability to acquire a permanent easement. But if you, in your negotiations with the property owners, decided that a longer term temporary easement was the right rate route. That is also um included within the authorization that we would be giving you, is that correct? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm asking you all this question. It's a question that I have. I think the answer is yes, but let him, let me confirm that. Uh, it's it's really not for for you all. I I really just wanted to understand the the legal dynamic of our authorization. Or our approval of an acquisition uh of an easement here, but we we will sort that out. Um, um, if you all don't immediately have that answer, which is fine.
Uh, this is Carrie Lowe from D C A S. I can confirm um that the the app, the approval that we're requesting here is for acquisition. And any type, any type of terms or specifics regarding the mechanism of acquisition would be worked out separately. So the answer to your question is yes.
That would include the term, the the term, the length of the term, permanent, not permanent, et cetera. Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, but I appreciate your confirming that. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. Um, well, let me just preface my question by saying I live in community board twelve. And uh, I'm familiar with this area and my question is not to the necessity of the easements. I think that's uh, that's quite clear. Uh, my question is, why was this property allowed? To decline uh to its present condition, uh thus necessitating this action that you're taking today?
I think part of the answer is 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 the way it was initially built by the developer. And that's what we have heard at the, at the um. At the community meetings, and I think what. And DOT can embellish or add to what I'm about to say is that I think that it is, there's a design that just wasn't um. Up to standard at the time, it was corrupted.
Uh, well, granted, uh, that may well be the case, but uh my question goes to the condition. And uh, this current condition did not happen overnight. This is a process of deterioration that's happened over years, if not decades. And again, I'm I'm wondering why specifically DOT and D E P did not take any action. Uh, well before uh today to remedy this problem.
So, hi, good morning, Keith Calb, interim Bronx Borough Commissioner, New York City DOT. And everybody hearing? Yeah, we can. So, w- once. The property in question, the retaining wall and the and the roadway were brought to the agencies. Um, was brought to our attention, we immediately um started action to move this process forward to. Repair the roadway and the retaining wall. Unfortunately, the, prior to my um. Uh, tenure here in the Bronx, this wall was built by unknown developer. The wall, the roadway and the adjacent. Houses were built not to our standard. And signed off by, in our assumption, the Department of Buildings, by builder's pavement plan. Once the defects came.
When was it brought to your attention, sir?
Um, when the um project on Bowler Avenue and Department of Design and Construction was repairing, um. I want to say it was around two thousand nine to ten. I have to double go back and check. It was brought to our attention when DDC was performing a Bowler Avenue and Needham Avenue. Um, repairing roadway defects on that road, which if you look at on the map, Bowler Avenue is the roadway west of Pratt Avenue. And all the homes are built in the same style, right? They were all built at the same time. Bowler Avenue was built the entire roadway because homes are on the west and east side of it. The roadway was not built completely on Pratt Avenue behind these homes. Uh, and the retaining wall was not built to the city's standards. Somehow, some of these homes do not have permanent certificate of occupancies. So, once it came to the to the city's um attention, uh at the bowl, when Bowler Evan was being done as part of a DDC project. That is when we started uh shoring up the the retaining wall. Uh, you know, coordinating repairs of the roadway and trying to add, at first, we tried to add this to the, to that DDC project. I don't remember the, 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 the project number or um or uh or such from from that long ago. But that's when it came to our attention, the Bowler Avenue project. And we have been working with the community board and elected officials and the residents of this block in order to secure it. But as you all know, the city can't just go in and do certain work on other people's property. There were acquisitions and safety things that had to be taken into consideration. So now, and in the past, under the the temporary um order, we did some emergency repairs of the retaining wall and of the roadway. And so now we would like to take over that property or not take over the problem, but get, you know, access to that property. So that we can permanently repair these structures, both the roadway, the the infrastructure, the sewer and water infrastructure. And the roadway to make it um safe for all users.
As I recall from early in the presentation, I believe it says that you you won't actually initiate construction until twenty twenty-four. Is that correct?
I'll let DDC answer that question. I believe that is accurate.
And is there any way that that can not be expedited, given the condition of these roads, uh that roadway? That seems like an extraordinarily long time to wait, given the condition of uh of that roadway.
Um, so we, we are currently, uh, this was in the presentation, we, our bridge division is currently monitoring the retaining wall. We have devices on it to make sure that it doesn't shift any further than it than it does. And we are trying, this is trying to expedite the the work to get this work done. We did an emergency declaration a couple of years ago, um, probably three years ago, uh, to make immediate repairs and to shore up the retaining wall. The wall is safe at this point, but it needs to be temporarily safe. We need to make it permanent safe and bring it into our inventory so that it can have routine maintenance, routine inspection and. Be a viable structure for the future. So right now.
Well, last question, the last question, if, if you were to proceed under uh some kind of emergency declaration now. Would it serve to expedite this process uh to any significant degree?
The um, the land use folks are gonna have to correct me if I'm wrong here, but some of the retaining wall is in the city's right of way. And some of the retaining wall, which is all one, essentially one wall, is on private property, which is why we need this acquisition. Right? So if we don't get that acquisition, we can't just fix half a retaining wall. That's not how structures work. We need to fix the entire structure as a, as one piece and fix the roadway as one piece. And that part of that retaining wall, as they showed you in the earlier maps, comes up through the middle of Pratt Avenue and then makes a left turn. Or west, turns west towards uh the property outside of the city's right of way.
Under an emergency declaration, would you not be empowered to fix the entire retaining wall? Be it public and private?
I'd have to refer to D C A S or the the lawyers. I I don't, I don't, I'm not sure, honestly.
Due to the remediation that we have done over the past three years, uh, the, do you, do you, do you holding up, destroying up on the, you, you, the retaining wall? And repairs to the roadway, it will be hard pressed to find someone that will give us a uh emergency declaration. But sorry, I didn't understand that. But those repairs, excuse me? Hello?
It's Bob from Make It. I was just going to say that in terms of the acquisitions. With, that's discussions with property owners who I think in this case are interested in facilitating this process and that could be shortened. Depending on how those, you know, acquisitions uh are finalized over twenty twenty-three. But I think we probably have a willing participants.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Marin. Can you hear me now, sir? We can, yes. Thank you. Um, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I heard a couple of things during the presentation that lead me to more questions. Um, one, uh, you're indicating that you need the permission of the homeowners. So if, does the homeowner's property line extend to the retaining wall?
The, the, yes, the, the damage and acquisition map includes the street and the retaining and therefore the.
That, that, that's not my question. My question is, do the property owners own up to the retaining wall? Because you're saying you need to get their permission to repair this retaining wall. So I would assume by that, that they own part of the property up to the retaining wall, is that correct or not correct?
Yes, that's correct for lot twelve and fifteen.
Thank you. So that's, that's question number one. Then question number two was that these homes do not have final C O's, which would lead me to believe that they don't as a result of this retaining wall issue. Will the repair and recreation of this retaining wall allow the homeowners to then? Work with someone, and that that'll be my next question, to afford them the opportunity to be able to file at the Department of Buildings to re- attain a permanent C O?
Believe that's a question for DDC. I'm not sure we have them on the call right now, but I believe I've heard them. Say that that is a process that is occurring. Uh, separate from, from this, this project, this team.
How many homes are, how many homes are affected and do not have a permanent C O? Is it all the homes in the line there or is it all the homes that were developed under this developer? I know you may not know the answer and I appreciate that.
I don't, I don't think we have that, I don't think we have that information.
Right, and I, I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but I, I think it's critical, Commissioner Cal, that, you know, we, we are, we are gonna fix one. Uh, one problem that these homeowners have, and then it, I don't hear that we're gonna resolve the others. So I think that there needs to be some attention paid and I know that DOT will, if this is not within DOT's purview, I respect that. But I'm a developer in, 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 in the city. I've done homes with T C O's. I know what happens when a developer forgets. And then that homeowner is penalized at the end and has to bear the burden of hiring the experts to to complete the permanent C O process. If we know, we're admitting that there's a problem here at this point, then I think it hooes us to be proactive and work with these develop, this development. Where all these, these homes may or may not have C O's permanent and make them whole. Otherwise, we're gonna have a second problem coming before us in the coming years.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll, we'll, we'll work with our partners at the Department of Buildings to see how we can remedy that.
I would appreciate that because I will continue to monitor this. Thank you very much. Thank you. Um, before I go to you, Commissioner Ramperchat, I just want to, I think there's a clarifying question for Wisher Bozorg, and I'm just gonna have her jump the line for a sec.
I'm just trying to understand um the temporary, the, the homes that do not have their final C O. That's, I was understanding what you're saying to say those are not the same homes that are on lot twelve and fifteen. The, so is it, is that right?
I don't know, we, we don't know the status of all the homes. We, when we did the, but when Department of Design and Construction did Bowler Avenue, it came to our attention at that time. That some of the homes here did not have C O's, so I don't know which homes have C O's and T C O's.
Because the homes on lot twelve and fifteen are on Marola Place, so that's.
Yeah, yeah, the, the homes on, the properties on lot twelve and fifteen are separate, yes.
Okay.
And were not built by the developer that built.
Right, that's, okay, I think that's what I was trying to understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ramperchat, thank you for that.
Thank you, uh, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions, concerns. I, I share the same concerns as Vice Chair Knuckles and Commissioner Marin, because when you see a project like this with so many agencies involved. A lot of things, she's gonna fall through the cracks. Uh, the one question I have is, the reason for the failure of the wall you're saying is due to construction. The construction methods that was used by a contractor, whoever that may be. Was there any, when you studied this, is there any issue with drainage on the street? Is there any current catch basins on that street and will, will they be installed? Because I see you're gonna put a fifteen inch storm sewer. So the catch bases are gonna be hooked up to that storm sewer? To alleviate the water on the street because.
There'll be a new collection.
Unfortunately.
There needs to be a new collection system installed on Pratt Avenue that would convey that to the new sewer, yes.
So D E P will be responsible for cleaning out the catch basins every so often, whatever the guidelines are for them, is that correct?
That's correct.
The, yep, the other question I have is, I know you said they're gonna do inspections. When actually do you guys do the spot inspections? Is it every year, two years? How does that work? Just for clarification, I just want to understand it.
Um, I believe we do uh structural uh inspections every two years, but I will double check it maybe every year. I'll have to double check.
My last question, is the funding fully in place to knock out this project within that two and a half, three year, or twenty-four month period? So that way there's no delays, because usually when you do any sewer installation, it, it's, there's something always causes a delay. So is the contractor in place, the, the funding?
So the contractor will be in place through the, through a bid process. I know there is no contractor right now. Uh, so DDC, when DDC complete the design, they will go into the, into procurement process and then they will select a contractor. As far as funding for the Pratt project, we are currently funded based on our estimate. And if we do need a further um funding fusion, we will, we will have it in place.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner, Commissioner Sario, thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for your presentation. Um, I, I had a quick clarification question and then uh another question. Just, just for clarity, lot twelve, right now is vacant, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, but is that, but that's not private, publicly owned, that's why you need the easement, right? The, right now, the only city-owned property is seventeen, correct?
Correct, that's right.
Thank you, thank you. The, the question that I have um has to do with uh the, the, the potential a public benefit. I mean, of course, besides repairing this piece of infrastructure, um, is, is, is. What are you going to, what, what type of landscaping or what type of neighborhood amenity can we say? Uh, this is going to return to the community once the area that you have shaded and light green as construction access, maintenance and inspection area. Which would be sort of the easement that you have along one oh one and then the new easement that will turn around seventeen into twelve and fifteen. The reason why I ask is because it sounds like a really cool opportunity. I know that there's no sidewalk on that side. But that could be an interesting, you know, green space, um, eh, not just vegetated area, but potential passive recreation amenity. Not to mention.
Not to mention the fact that you could connect this with 17 and then offer connection to Marola Place, et cetera. So my question is, what type of, you know, landscape design are you gonna, do you plan to build here once you have permanent access to 12 and 15? And is there going to be a connection? What type of connection would that be? So, so we can understand what the final plan would look like.
Um, I'll defer to Keith as on this one as well, but I don't believe it's intended that other, I mean, the, the Pratt Avenue, once the land is fully vested by the city, would be a public street, although it is a, a dead end street and it has the great differentials. I, it would be open to the public, but I don't, it wouldn't connect really to any, any parks or anything. Um, and the balance of the properties along Pratt, that would be undeveloped. Um, well, it's not proposed to improve them with sidewalks or landscaping at this time. The, the, um, and the easements, they would just be access, accessible only to the city for maintenance and it's, and inspection, not public use.
That's correct.
Thank you. I mean, eh, oh, thank you. Thank you for that. I, I just feel that it's, um, this could be an interesting opportunity. I am encouraged to think about what could be the potential there, particularly as you approach the, 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 eh, landowners over here. I mean, I think that, eh, thinking about how can, at the end of this process, uh, the community can gain, um, a neighborhood amenity would be a, a, a really, uh, strong opportunity as you frame your conversations with them. And also just a quick, another quick follow-up. You mentioned that there will be some trees removed, that you will replace them. It sounds also like another reason why you may want to plan ahead and, and really sort of frame whatever landscape improvements you can do, given the fact that you may need to intervene some of these trees anyways.
Yeah, I don't speak for DOT. There may be opportunities to plant additional trees on lot 17, but it has to be also maintained as a access point for DOT visiting vehicles.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, being no other questions here, uh, let me just note, uh, uh, Commissioner Cal, we, uh, I, I didn't, I didn't, uh, cite you as somebody at the top, so thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Um, and I also note that I have Alimer Rahman signed up, uh, I believe as part of this team, but I just wanted to make sure, uh, that um, Alimer Rahman is part of this team as opposed to a member of the public. Is that correct? DDC, Alimer Rahman of DDC. I just want to make sure that you are part of this applicant team and that I'm not, uh.
I just promoted, um.
Promoted to applicant team. Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate your, uh, your being here. We know this is a complicated project and, uh, uh, we, we appreciate your, your efforts on behalf of, uh, this neighborhood and the, the residents here. Um, and I will just give a final call to see if there are members of the public who wish to testify on this item. Uh, I do not see any, so we will close the hearing on calendar number nine, the Pratt Avenue retaining wall and roadway reconstruction, and we will open, uh, the hearing on calendar number 10 and 11. Madam Secretary.
For our Brooklyn, calendar numbers 10 and 11, 1880, 1888, Coney Island Avenue rezoning. CD 12, calendar number 10, CE, uh, 210090ZMK, calendar number 11, and 210091ZRK. In the matter of an application for zoning map and zoning text minutes concerning 1880, 1888, Coney Island Avenue rezoning.
Great. Thank you very much. For the applicant team, we have Eric Palatnik, Frankie Nunez, Bishop Taylor, uh, and Anna Martinova. Uh, and welcome. We're glad you're here. Uh, you have 10 minutes and whenever you are ready, you can go for it.
I always feel like a drag racer when that's, they say 10 minutes. Hi, my name is Eric Palatnik and I'm representing 1880 Coney Island Avenue. And first I'd like to say to all the commissioners and the chair, thank you for your in-person meetings. I'd also like to comment on your staff and your entire agency has a renewed energy and a spirit, uh, playing off of the seven o'clock shout-out that happened during COVID. And, uh, it's really shown and, uh, shown all around the city. So thank you. Uh, we're here today joined by a couple of different people. Uh, Bishop Taylor is with, is here today. He's a community engagement coordinator. And he's going to be speaking a little bit during our presentation about the community benefits, part of the agreement of our application in the MIH. And also with us is Frankie Nunez with Studio Gallus Architects. Before I lead into the presentation, I know you all know a lot about it and I've heard the review session. Uh, I'm sure you've all heard that the community board has unanimously denied it. It was a very friendly meeting. We all joked and laughed and had a great time. While they rejected me, it felt like high, felt, felt like high school. Uh, we, uh, we also were heard by the borough president, who I believe supported it and wrote a very detailed recommendation on it. Uh, so we're in a weird situation. We've been speaking to Calvin Jaeger, who's the councilman. We've been in constant contact with him. We spoke with him. I texted with him this morning on the way here to let him know what was going on. Uh, we are proposing an eight-story building that is 95 feet tall. Uh, it's the first building of its kind that's been built in an area that's had very little MIH built within the last 30 or 40 years. Only 53 units have been built. Uh, it's in, we're creating 60, so we're doubling the amount of affordable housing in an area in the last 60 years. It's in an area of Brooklyn where there is limited ability to build housing on the side streets. It's protected by the Ocean Parkway sub-district. It's dozen mile apartment buildings or educational or community facility institutions on the side streets. Coney Island Avenue, in my opinion, I've been driving it for years since my father was a sales rep, selling gift-wearing crystal. Uh, I think it's in, in Yiddish, uh, portions of it are schmutz. Uh, it has cars that are being repaired on the streets. It has cars for sale. It has auto body repair. Uh, it looks nothing like Ocean Parkway. It looks nothing like Queens Boulevard. Uh, it could substantially do for an improvement, in my opinion. And that leads right into this application. This application is for a C45D, which is exactly analogous to the existing zoning across the street, which is R7A. It's for a housing development that's exactly analogous to a commercial development that's already been built on the block. It is smaller than the as-of-right development. It's rezoning a C8 zoning district on a block that was built for the car. This is where Brooklynites go and New Yorkers go to get their cars. The site is owned by a car dealership. They bought it for the car. Family that owns it is the Rosati family and the owner, the dealership that owns it is Plaza Auto Mall. They have plans in place to build an auto body shop there. They can. They could also build a 20-story self-storage facility. Could also build a 15 or 20-story medical office building like some people did right down the block. They'd like to build an apartment building. They're in a very unique position to do so because they've owned the property for decades. There's no 421 out there and inflation is through the roof. We're all experiencing it. They have the financial ability to build it. And they're creating affordable housing in MIH option level one. So I'm hoping I'm giving you enough ability here to see that what we are asking for is quite reasonable. I have a presentation. I'll just sort of flip through it and then I'll let the other speakers flip, talk, and then I'll come back and some of the discussions. Uh, the building, you can see in the rendering and the imagery right here, uh, there was a lot of talk about its, its fenestration and its, its windows and it's, 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 it's a big building because it takes up an entire city block. Uh, this is what it looks like right now. It's a Staples and it was Estes, which was a very iconic wig shop, uh, in, in the Orthodox Jewish community. A lot of women went there. Maybe some men, but I think it was mostly women. And that's gone. Estes is gone. Staples, the lease is over. They're gone. Everything that's there is one story and it's in the process of being demolished. This is the site right here at the bottom of the screen. This other side of the street is all zoned R7A. At the right side of our block, you can see a not, a seven-story, 95-foot-tall office building. That's in the C8 district that we're within. That's what can be built. I know there's been a lot of people saying, Palatnik, you're screwing up our neighborhood. You make it, here you are again. This is actually unfortunately for the people that are opposed to it, I think one of the most logical land use applications I've ever had in my career. It actually fits. It's 10 feet tall. I know Commissioner Duac made the comment yes, on Monday, and I do acknowledge that. But there's no 421 and none of those buildings that are 10 feet shorter have any affordable housing under the MIH program. It's a big bonus for the develop, for the community and it's not being done with any money at all. The government gives nothing. And it, to me, that's a disgrace in New York City and New York State that we have so much need and the government is not doing a thing, but that's not your doing. That's another conversation. I know that. Uh, this tells you what the community prevalence districts, uh, the, the uses are. Community Board 12, uh, as you could see, uh, 26% of the residents have incomes below, uh, the New York City poverty threshold. That's on the right side. Uh, the bottom right shows you the number of units I said built within the last however many years. It's, it's 53 units. The left side shows you the rent burden people have. You, you have a need here. You have no housing being, very limited housing being built. And we're very close to the subways and the buses. Uh, I, I'll just give you this because this, I think, is a very telling image. And then I think I could stop talking and let Bishop Taylor speak and we can come back into things. Uh, th- this image we crafted, everything you see on the far side that's shown in the ghost shadows all as-of-right. It just hasn't been built because maybe the market hasn't been there. Maybe nobody's been able to acquire the assemblages that are needed. Some of the buildings have been built. On the right-hand side of the screen, I could show you pictures of three or four nine-story buildings that are built. But the reason why you're not seeing the block front built out, here are some of them. Here's what's been built across the street. Almost identical to what we're asking you to build here. Uh, I think we have a very logical request. We are working with the councilmen. We're talking about trying to, to make the building a little bit lower. I don't think we're able to make it as low as he wants us to make it, but we're willing to talk to him. In the rear of the building, you can see in, uh, I'll show you one more thing that you should be alert to. In the rear of the building is a garden area. This is what can be built as-of-right, this slide. So just to give everybody a keen understanding for what we're asking for, I know people are upset about the size of the building. This is the worst-case scenario. So obviously, you know, it's made for our studies with you. So nobody, I think, would build a 24-story building, but clearly showing you that a, a monster could be built there. What I wanted to show you is this stuff. This, this property has a weird configuration in the rear that has a jut out into the residential homes on East 10th Street. That's what you're seeing in the back. It's sort of like a Lego set kind of looking thing. That all we're creating, proposing in the discussions to create a very quiet, uh, non-activated area around the home. So that, that's, we're not planning to use that as a, as an activated area. So that's one of the gives. We're also talking and trying to convince people that we'll slide the, we'll, trying to convince them to support it by sliding the, the rear wall back. And like I said, we're trying to bring the height down and we are overparked by 200, we have 242 parking spaces for, well overparked. We need 90-something. And the reason we did that is because A, the community said they needed cars and the census data shows that both car, uh, homeownership and rentals own tons of cars. I can give you the exact stats, but people in this neighborhood, whether you're renting or owning, a lot of people have cars. So, uh, as much as we want to encourage transit-oriented development, uh, the census data shows that people have cars. Uh, but we're willing to talk about that. Bishop Taylor is here to speak. Uh, probably you have about two minutes left, I see. Uh, you're next. All right. When Eric retires from land use and stuff he's doing, I want to take him on a roll for a comedy show because he's great. I mean, listen, he can tell the story. Uh, good morning, Chair Giradnek, Vice Chair Knuckles, and to all the commissioners here on this morning. Um, I'm Bishop Mitchell Taylor, uh, from Inside Track PR. My role is to organize uh, the community and to amplify the conversations and the sentiments being considered around this particular development. Um, as Eric has already highlighted, this is a very, very, um, I mean, you, you could see why this makes sense just by walking that neighborhood. Uh, I have a very, very strong relationship with Coney Island because I have relatives that live there and so I spent my summers out there, uh, and, and whatnot. And, uh, as an adult, I, I minister at a lot of the churches in Coney Island. And speaking to a lot of the pastors there, one of the things that they fear the most is that there's been no housing built. None whatsoever. And so their parishioners that are looking for housing, uh, will have to leave the neighborhood, move to other neighborhoods, which disaggregates congregations. Uh, but let me start by saying that we are definitely in a housing crisis in New York City. With affordable housing being at the top of the list, with many New Yorkers paying 50 to 60% or more of their income in rent. This is not a secret. Uh, The Gothamist reported yesterday that New York City's population growth has outpaced housing construction over the last decade. The city added 800,000 residents, but only 200,000 homes, according to the mayor of New York. It's a complicated situation, but we have more people than we have homes. Also, uh, Governor Hochul said, with our state staring down a housing crisis, we will need every community, every town, in every city to do its part to make housing accessible and affordable for all. And so, given this information and applying that information to this current application, it's hard for me to codify. Time's up.
That's your time. We can finish, finish your sentence. Go ahead.
It's just hard for me to codify why this doesn't make sense when folks in our neighborhood need affordable housing, need housing itself, and the precedence is there. It's not going to be overbearing. It's going to be contextual with the community and provide a service that we can't even afford to provide to New Yorkers. This developer is doing it on his own dime. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bishop Taylor. Uh, let me just start with a, a couple of questions just to kick it off and then I'm gonna go to Commissioner Duac and others. Um, tell us a little bit more about the, uh, the character of Coney Island Avenue and its ability to, um, handle more residential development of this type.
Sure. Uh, obviously, I'm speaking with the chair of the Planning Commission and, and very knowledgeable commissioners. As I mentioned a moment ago, the screen isn't, is blank right now. I don't know if I could pull up, uh, the image on the screen behind you. Uh, but Coney Island Avenue is a wide thoroughfare. It's one of the widest thoroughfares in the city. Uh, it has the taller buildings that I just pointed out to you, but there are not that many despite the zoning designation of the block front. Uh, now, as the city is coming out of COVID, you are seeing the outer boroughs have taken a renewed energy and a vigor that I would dare say is outpacing the borough of Manhattan at this point and people's desire to live, work and play in the same location. That is making a location like this that much more desirable for people. Gone are the days where people are John Travolta in Saturday Night Fever, packing up the U-Haul to go over the bridge. It's quite the opposite. They're quite happy with the neighborhood they grew up in and they're happy to stay there. And this, this avenue, I think, could accommodate it from the height perspective. Uh, the East 10th Street residents are the ones that were objecting and I think that's who the councilman is speaking to in, in his concerns because I know that's the elephant in the room, is that there are people that are objecting to the application. And, uh, to, to those people, uh, we have set forth to them that this is much better than what the alternatives could be. Also, we set forth, uh, the as-of-right is a car dealership. Uh, I worked for the Rosatis. We just sent them through a very contentious application on No Street Avenue, their main dealership, to expand their dealership because people needed cars, you might have heard recently. And we were met with fierce opposition to putting the car dealership, to enlarging it. We were told, go away. Don't locate the car dealership here. So now we have the exact opposite situation. We have a C8 that's fit for a car dealership. We could repair cars and paint them all day and night long and bang on them. But that's not what we are seeking to do here. And the reason why is because it really is well situated for residential. And to your point, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's why I think Coney Island Avenue is the right avenue for it because it is so well situated for residential.
Thank you. And tell us a little bit about the proximity of this site to mass transit.
Uh, well, we're about a 10-minute walk to the, uh, uh, to the, uh, King's Highway subway station. At the King's Highway subway station, you have the B, the Q and the R available to you. The B68 bus runs up and down the block. I heard your questions and I Googled this morning how long it would take during rush hour and it's a 44-minute commute uh, to Manhattan and it's probably about a 25-minute commute to Lower Brooklyn. And I cannot tell you the number of people that I speak to that don't commute anymore. And I think you know that yourself, that the Zoom hearings today, that not everybody is even commuting anymore. So there's no real need to always, every day be commuting. But nonetheless, it is very well situated uh, for proximity to the, the urban core working centers.
Certainly agree with that. Uh, let's talk then about the parking spaces.
A lot of parking spaces.
So there's a lot of spaces that are being proposed here. 242, 86 are required. Max is 259. You can, you can number check me if I got any of those wrong.
Yeah, pretty close.
Okay, close enough, at least for the conversation. Um, why so many parking spaces? Um, and wouldn't we be better off, um, allocating those spaces to more housing on a wide avenue so close to transit?
Okay. So, and I can understand the conversation because I'm in the middle of it with you every single day. I'm actually out at community board meetings. I dare say I'm even sometimes a little closer to it than most people would be. And I hear the discussion, which is you're blowing all this cash on the parking. We need housing. We don't mind giving you the space. Why don't you take some of the money, though, that you're digging out these expensive foundations and put it to something a little more productive than a car? All right. And, and I empathize with that approach. Uh, unfortunately, in this area, the stats play, tell very, from the census, tell the tale very clearly. Not, as what I said before, 91% of homeowners have cars and 60% of renters have cars. That's a very high amount of car ownership. That was echoed to us. We've been going to the community board and the councilmen for three years on this application. We started a meeting with everybody in 2018 when it first started. We started meeting with everybody in two thousand and eighteen, when it first started, when we first introduced the idea. We were asked at the very first meeting to add tons of parking. We, and at the last meeting, even when I was being thoroughly rejected on the application itself, I was told, "If you're gonna build it, have a ton of parking, but we don't want to see it over our dead bodies." So, i- i- you know, the sentiment is there, that the parking is wanted and desired. I can understand the planning discussion against it. Uh, people do own the cars. People do look in that community to the car to get around, for whatever reason, and, uh, we wanted to accommodate that. But we're flexible on that, understanding where, we don't have anything to, to build yet, absent everybody's approval. So we are not in any position to be demanding anything.
Um, before I go to my colleagues, um, let's just go over those numbers for this community district on affordable housing.
Okay.
Um, over the last ten years, how many units of affordable housing were created in this community board?
Have to go back to the stat I just showed you. It was on a slide. I think eight units. Fifty, fifty-three units, point oh-eight percent of all units in the community board.
So fifty-three total units were created, affordable units in this community board over ten years?
Yes.
And this project, if approved, as currently, uh, proposed, would add sixty,
Sixty, yes.
Which would be, with one project, more than doubling the number of affordable units in this community board than we have seen over ten years. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Duac, and then Commissioner Krom.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, good morning, Eric.
Good morning.
Good morning, yeah. Um, so i- i- here's some, um, observations on, on the project, on the proposed project. The R-seven-A across the street is not M.I.H., uh, it's not mapped M.I.H., so therefore the height wouldn't be ninety-five feet. It would be, uh, eighty-five feet, which is a big difference, and, and especially since we're discussing height. Um, the property referenced on the corner of Avenue P and Coney Island Avenue, that fronts two wide streets. So again, the ninety-five feet, uh, kind of feels different instead of in the mid-block. And while I understand and agree that there's a desperate need for housing, um, the proposal is not coming to us as a housing, uh, designation. It's not designated as an R-seven-A. It has the equivalent of an R-seven-A, but it's actually coming into us as a commercial designation, which allows for the building, the building of an office building, uh, which would have a height that I think is out of context. Certainly, uh, I think that i- in today's market, and with the absence of four-twenty-one-A, the numbers might work better for an office building. I know that the office building on the corner is achieving about a forty-dollar, uh, per square foot rent, and I think that the pro forma in that area on residential is in the forties, too. And without the, and you, and you can still qualify for an ICAP under the office, uh, building versus no four-twenty-one-A currently on that. So my concern is that it is going to end up as an office building. And again, we're approving it based on the fact that we do need housing and housing and so forth and so on. And I, I agree with, we need housing, but that's not, once, once it leaves this body and leaves the council, it becomes as-of-right, and we have no long, no, no, no control over it. So I, I, and I would like to see this site developed. I know the site very well. Staples, not just Staples, by the way. Um, yeah, that was, you see, at least you got it.
Yeah.
Um, and, but I think that a C-four-three-A designation, which would give you a three-point-six F.A.R. equivalent, mapped with M.I.H., would only take away one F.A.R. from the project. We create the housing. It might not be sixty hu- uh, units of affordable. Uh, I'm not sure. I haven't done the numbers on what it would come out to, but it might be, uh, in the forties. Uh, it would solve many problems on the height, and I think that would have a better, uh, a chance of getting approved by the council member and give you the flexibility to do an office building, a residential building. And I don't think it would, uh, bother the community so much to see something nice built on that site. So from my perspective, I'd love to see this come back as a C, C-four-three-A. And if it is a residential, then put it as an R-seven-A and let us, uh, you know, let us look at it as an R-seven-A. But it, it is the R-seven-A equivalent. There's no guarantee that that building gets built as a, as, 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 uh, as housing. So those are my concerns and, and objections. And again, I don't know what Councilman Jaeger is gonna, uh... I don't know how he, I know you've been in touch with him, but...
Yeah, we've been talking.
If you, can you shed any light on your...
Yeah, well, you, listen, you, you spoke very, you, you spoke very clearly on what the issues are going on in the community, right? There's, there's the land use arguments and the discussions we've been having. And there's a community discussion that's been going on. I think your speaker yesterday spoke about it yesterday before your, uh, review session yesterday. You had a very, on Monday. Uh, so there's always the community, the cultural norms of the community and things of that nature. Uh, the, the problem we have with, with the heights that you just suggested is that it, it just makes, it throws, we've done the numbers. It, it just does not work. The cost of construction on this development and the numbers work out that the C, the three-point-oh F.A.R. will not work.
It would not be three-point, it would be three-point-six.
Three-point-six. Well, the six goes to the affordable, so that's almost a wash. But to the point that I'm trying to suggest to you is that we have started discussing things with, with councilmen. Your point is well-taken about across the street being seventy feet or eighty, excuse me.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five feet across the street. We're proposing ninety-five feet. We have said that we're willing to discuss bringing our building to the eighty-five-foot mark to match that. When we've, have the architects starting to analyze plans. Frank is here, and he's started to analyze plans to that effect. But to go smaller than that is putting the burden on this property in order to solve the affordable housing needs when the person across the street walked out and walked in to whatever free-market situation they had and were burdened by the regulatory requirement of the affordable housing. So I don't think it would be fair to say one side of the street should, should have a lower density and provide affordable. The other side gets free-market rate, especially since the other side is not even willing to build right now. They're, they're just building market rate, and they're not doing anything for affordable. So I, I can hear what you're saying. I understand it. And I think if this was a situation where we had some kind of fortune on benefit or some tax abatement to maybe help soften the financial difference, because that's all it really is. Uh, and as for the commercial goes, I can hear your point to that also. I'll just note this for the commission. You were entitled to build commercial right now as-of-right, uh, the two-point-oh F.A.R. And then we could also build medical up to, I think it's a four-point-eight F.A.R. So we could build a mixed-use building like the one on the corner right now as-of-right without all of us sitting here talking about it. There's no reas, we're not creating a Trojan horse, so to speak, to create a large office building. The, the allowable, the, the office market these days, as I'm sure you all know, is less than stellar. What's propping it up is the medical marketplace, which is a community facility.
But in that, that area, the office market is, is, is quite robust.
It's strong. But nonetheless, if we were here for office, the Rosati's would have packed up and left a while ago, because that, they're entitled to build, uh, a two-F.A.R. where we would only get twice the amount, but we can make up the difference with automotive, and we could also make up the difference with community facility. They could certainly craft an as-of-right building with their automotive business, the office use, and a community facility. So you don't have to be concerned that they're trying to build a large office building here. But they are trying to build residential, and we are happy to talk and engage in that conversation. You just said about the eighty-five, uh, foot height limit and engage in that. I think smaller is just putting the numbers. I mean, look at what we're all living through right now with, with numbers. I mean, it's not what we all would have expected.
I would express my opinion. I'll let my colleagues, uh...
Thank you, and thanks for the discussion.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good to see you, Eric.
Nice to see you, too.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kromani?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Um, so I just want to be super clear. I have a, I have a question for you and then, uh, Bishop Taylor. Um, is the, the resounding opposition of Community Board Twelve the size?
Is it what?
The size?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And then, um, Bishop Taylor, c- can you talk a little bit more about, as you've interacted with, uh, residents? Like, just a little bit more of what they think, a little more detail of your conversations.
Well, well, as you know, Coney Island is a very unique, uh, piece of geography. And, um, the people that live there, you know, have lived in most of their residence for long, long times. And there's not, there's not a lot of movement, but there's a lot of need. You know, you have people doubling up in residences, living with relatives and family, especially in the churches that I've moved around in. And there has not been any buildings to accommodate the growth. And so what I hear people saying is that, "When is that going to happen?" And so with no four-twenty-one-A, with no subsidy from the city or the state or the federal government, we have someone that wants to build on a street that will accommodate residents that have been crying out for development for a while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Knuckles?
Thank you. Um, I guess my question is for the architect. I, I personally, I'm, I need not be persuaded on the, the, uh, need for housing here. And, uh, my hope would be that there would not, uh, ultimately be commercial development here, but residential development. But my question goes to, um, uh, a point that the Borough President has made, and that is about the, uh, what's proposed here. I mean, this is a, this looks like, what, at least a five-hundred-foot frontage along...
Four-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Four-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Close.
And, you know, it, what is proposed, while to my mind not unattractive, but it, it presents a slab, a very, very long slab along, you know, a very prominent avenue. And I'm just wondering, uh, could there not be, um, some mitigation of that slab effect with regard to the design?
We heard that from the commissioner, uh, from all of you before, and we actually redid our rendering to break everything apart in conjunction with the Office of City Planning, uh, and their recommendations. We took that and redid our renderings. And I believe that the way the renderings are done now show that the, uh, building has been broken apart a lot better than it did initially in our first, uh, application to you guys. And, um, we're willing to do more, definitely more to explore it. The problem is also that we have some limitations to our streetscape, you know, under the current zoning regulations. We can't really do that much recess. I think we have to maintain our, our street line at seventy percent. We can only play around with about thirty percent on that wall, which is still substantial. It still gives us a lot to do. This is just one rendition that we can do, playing with the materials and all that. But you're right, ultimately, in the end, this building, we, it's, it's a difficult aspect that we'll have to work with, but it's definitely doable with materials today and techniques with the balconies. So we know that. We've heard it, and we're willing to apply that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bozorg, followed by Commissioner Osorio.
Actually, my questions were asked, so I'm okay.
Okay, Commissioner Osorio, followed by Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you so much, Chair. Thanks for the presentation, and thanks for your responses. They've, they've been very useful to understand, uh, how the original proposal has been evolving. I have a couple of questions, uh, building on some of my colleagues. Uh, I'll start with, um, maybe that last point, and, and just say that I appreciate the effort to, uh, address what even people that support the proposal have been asking about in terms of the massing and in terms of the street wall. Um, but I think that, as you, as you hinted, I think that we, we should continue that effort because it's still very monolithic. Um, moving on, I, I wanted to ask if you can walk us a little bit through the AMI breakdown by race? I just wanted to point out that, um, you know, I'm concerned to see that black non-Hispanics have been dropping considerably. That's the largest drop, uh, minus nine percent, and their median household income is, you know, at fifty-eight, eh, pl- eh, K-plus. Um, so, so I was wondering if you can help us understand sort of how, how the AMI, AMI breakdown is responding to this particular group, which, which, eh, seems to be, um, eh, leaving, eh...
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And we heard your, everybody's comments on Monday, and we spent some time crafting a response. And since the information is very specific, I apologize if I'm not making eye contact all the time. I'm staring at my notes, because, uh, as my law school professor said, "You all need to know numbers, not just words." Uh, the, the AMI in the area, thank you for laughing, the AMI in the area is sixty-five thousand dollars, and that's taken off of the census, uh, that, that covers Sheepshead Bay, Garrison Beach, and Homecrest. Uh, the majority, to answer your question, uh, the majority of the people that are gonna benefit from, that will benefit from this is the black, Asian, and Hispanic residents. And that is because, uh, the proposed developments, income-restricted units, which are listed at option level one, uh, they, they can, they are targeting, uh, the very lowest of the income population, which is at thirty-one percent of the lowest of the local population. So thirty-one percent of the population is who benefits from the M.I.H. program. When you break into that, that group, that group contains a higher proportion of Asians. They make up twenty percent of that group. Hispanics make up a twenty-three percent compared to the blacks, which make up eight percent, and the whites, which make up sixteen percent. So what I'm giving you, if you, if you look at the numbers, is the twenty percent, the twenty-three percent, and the eight percent, which represents the Asian, Hispanic, and black community proportionally, uh, respectively, uh, you're seeing that the, the M.I.H. target band here is hitting that quote-unquote "sweet spot" where you're likely to find the largest proportion of those ethnicities. Now, of course, M.I.H. cannot be designed around any race or religion or ethnicity, but the demographics can be juxtaposed and be analyzed. And really, what you're seeing is that, that's the demographic group that is in, right in, like I said, the sweet spot of the option level one. So I, I hope that gave you some information you wanted. I do have a lot more information written down with a bunch of charts and graphs that, that correlate with all this data where we got it from. We could submit that after the hearing.
I would appreciate, I would appreciate more information, because, you know, you lose me a little bit when you compare the median household income for black non-Hispanics with those of Asian non-Hispanics. Asian non-Hispanics have a median household income of seventy thousand plus, and black non-Hispanics of fifty-eight. So I, I would like to understand how and why you're combining these two, eh, groups into that box.
Like I said, I was, I, we've worked on this. I have a team of people that are more knowledgeable on this than I could ever dream to be, and I'll help you get the answer more specifically, open and writing.
Thank you very much. I have a couple more questions. Is that okay?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. So the, the other question that I had here, um, eh, regarding, and this is, this is really prompted by the renderings. Again, thank you so much for the effort to continue to address that ongoing comment. But mine is about, um, or according to some of the Borough President's questions on, um, sustainability measures. Um, and so what, what the renderings show is a very, very vast gray, eh, impermeable roof. And maybe you're, you're working on, um, eh, ideas initiatives that are not reflected there. So I would like to hear, you know, what, what, what are you planning to, uh, build here, particularly to respond to local laws ninety-two and ninety-four regarding green roofs and solar?
So we actually do have drawings that we've been sketching out in, with, in conjunction, you know, with, what we've been hearing here and also what the client's been asking us to do. The entire second-floor roof in the rear of the building is gonna be an active area for the residents there. We're gonna make, be having an outdoor space. We don't really have the ability to do any kind of drywall here. Everything's gonna be detention tanks and roof. So it's, it leans itself to become a blue roof. So we're gonna do a combination of blue roof systems with green roofs. So it extends the, the, uh, you know, the age of the, the, of the roof. And, um, not only that, but having all that green space on the roof. The thing is, we haven't rendered any of that, because we're still kind of fighting this idea of, you know, what the streetscape should look like. And, uh, you know, we kind of limit it in redoing the rendering now. We kind of get it, we have to get this design in the sweet spot that everybody's happy with before we start going into the details of everything. But we could do a rendering of the second floor. That's kind of set. And, uh, we also would like to have access. I mean, I know, um, Eric said that we're not gonna really activate that, that, their rear yard, but one of the ideas is, hey, we can, we can have a stairs, we can have a garden there for the residents, you know? Because we do have that space. Why not? But again, we want to make sure that this, uh, design is good for everybody.
Thank you. I, I, I encourage you to do that, and if you, if there's anything that you can share in that regard, that would be really useful for us. There's an incredible potential here to engage the community around programming that space.
I'm a pre- graduate, and it kind of is instilled in us to make sure that design is number one, so I'm all for that.
Perfect. I just had one last question, uh, which is, which has to do with the parking. So, uh, thank you very much for, um, addressing the, the chair's question in this regard. Um, I, I respectfully disagree with the fact that because the trend is like that with current, uh, automobile ownership, we should just respond to that as compared to anticipating, um, climate laws that require us to make an immediate departure from that. I also just wanted to clarify that, according to the documents that we have, eh, the community has been cited regarding their call for insufficient street parking, not indoor parking, which is different, unsafe pedestrian conditions, and perennial traffic congestion along Coney Island Avenue, which are all sort of related with their concerns for the massing.
With adding more cars.
So, so I'm, I'm, I just want to echo some of the, the questions and concerns from our, our colleagues in terms of, you know, why do we need so much parking? Um, and also, how do we make sure that we're really, uh, focusing and, and, and to credit the applicant's, um, commitment to increase affordable housing, um, eh, 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 why are we missing the opportunity to maximize the amount of affordable housing units here with so many unrequired parking spaces?
It's a good comment, and I, and I can see you have, you have a very strong opinion on it, and I applaud you for that. Um, I can understand where you're coming from with the, the climate change and with the immediate change in behaviors that'll happen over the next half a century, I'm sure. Uh, but the, the current demand is still there. I mean, people still come by cars. They still drive around the neighborhood. So we'd be happy to eliminate it if the commission felt as if they, this is really meant for greater minds than I. If the recommendation were to be to remove it, we'd be happy to remove it. If the recommendation were to be to remove it, we'd be happy to remove it. We included it at the recommendation of the community. Uh, the, the data supports what they were saying, but, as you said, we're spending a lot of money doing this. We're creating a sub-seller, which is obviously, I'm dealing with professionals. You all know how expensive that is. So we would be happy to, to jettison that idea if that was something that you wanted to see removed. But from a planning perspective, to create this many units in a community where you do have people using cars, uh, it seems like it would be a good thing to have. Now, to your comment on the pedestrian safety in the street system, uh, when we were talking with everybody in the neighborhood, we did point out that this would be much safer for the street system and the comings and goings of a large office building or a medical office building with accessory and, and things like that, and deliveries, and, and, and all that sort of stuff. And people coming and going all day long. A residential development has just two curb cuts. For the most part, if we're all doing our jobs, then the way most people do, we're leaving one time a day, coming back another time, and that's the extent of it for most of the week. Uh, so I think a residential is safer towards the street system than a commercial would be, but we'll leave it up to you to decide how you wanna treat the additional parking. I can understand the philosophical and, uh, you know, intellectual discussion that planners are all having about this.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
My question is about the community board's response, um, and something that you said earlier, which is that those who would be most likely to qualify for the affordable housing are not the same population as those who live directly around the site. Is that fair to say?
I don't know if you could say that, but the, the, the census tract shows that there, there is a, a lot of people at lower income levels spread throughout the community board. So I, I don't, I mean, if you wanna take just a, a gander at the housing prices on East Tenth Street, I would dare say that most people on East Tenth Street are paying a million dollars or so for the houses on East Tenth Street these days. So I don't think necessarily know if they're looking for it, but maybe they have children or, or parents that would be looking for it. Uh, that's what I would, how, how I'd answer that.
Okay, and that ties into, and I know this is a, how we've written the inclusionary housing, et cetera, but it seems as if most of the apartments will be studios and ones.
No, we're changing, that's changing right now. Uh, that, that was a discussion that we've had with the councilman. Uh, it was created originally for studios and ones because there's a strong amount of need for starter apartments in the area. It's a tremendously large younger population as well as an elderly population. Uh, but when we went to the community board, it's been made clear to us, obviously, there's also some cultural reasons why a larger apartment would be needed there. And in the discussions we've had, uh, since the Learning Commission with JWEC, and Frankie's been revising the plans, has been to, and I texted the councilman this morning, to up the number even more than we have them now. Uh, we've changed it once already, unbeknownst to you, we're changing it again, to add even more twos and threes.
Okay, if you could get us that information, um, I, I note that right now there are no threes, and I thought it might make the community board more receptive if there was a larger number of larger apartments.
Thank you.
And does that mean you're gonna change the mix of all of the apartments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, we have a, a new unit distribution. We were, uh, we'll present everything back to you, whatever. We, we'll talk to the councilman in the next few days, and we'll present back to you the latest of our discussions with him and what we're thinking about.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozorg?
Hi, uh, thank you for your presentation and, um, uh, all the answers to the questions. I just also wanna lend my voice to the concerns around the non-required parking, um, and also fully agree that going based on current demand, um, isn't necessarily the policy direction we wanna move in, but also acknowledge that that's not just on individual projects to solve, though I think it's on us as a public entity and on the public sector, um, the Department of Transportation, others, to make these alternatives more appealing than car ownership. Um, but I think it's challenging to accept and, and hope that that number does come down as a project.
I'm listening to what you're both saying, and I'm a, I'm a student of the issue. I'm watching cities around the country putting maximum on parking. It's, I don't know if you're all paying attention to that, but no more, they're removing minimum parking requirements instead of putting in a maximum amount of cars that they'll accept. More to that line of thinking that there's a limit to how many cars they wanna see. So I understand your policy. I'll talk about it with, with the owner, and, uh, we'll talk about it with the councilman and see, uh, see how it all weighs in together.
Yeah, and unrelated to the parking, or, or maybe somewhat related, um, I, I do wanna pull on Commissioner Dweck's point a little bit, that we have, as a city, seen projects that come through as one thing, get approved, and then the owner decides to sell. So even if the owner is saying that they're committed to a residential project, they may, the economics may change. They may decide to sell. Um, and I know that that could come potentially with some reputational risk to the whole development team, um, uh-
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm curious if you could just talk a little bit about if there's anything more since we all agree. And I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm also personally, I, I hope the density remains. I hope the height remains. I think we need as much housing as we can get built in this area. Um, obviously with improvements to the massing and other concerns that have been raised. But, so I'm pro this density in residential building, but is there anything, any other guarantees you can provide of that this would stay a residential project?
There's no real guarantees, but I'll say this. This, that we did not come in proposing to do this district. Uh, we wanted to build a residential. It's been the trend within the city's planning through the last few years to all, open up the option of the C-four and C-five districts in some of the heavier, more urban populations where the, where the streets are wider and they could accommodate it. So McDonald Avenue, for example, you've acted on numerous applications, I know, it's a C-four, four L district. Uh, I know on Queens Boulevard, you're seeing C-four districts as well. So it's been the flavor of choice, not from our pushing of it, but just simply, I think, to the, the tone of the parking conversation and trending, is that there's been the recognition that things are morphing as time goes on. We no longer have this clear demarcation of uses. We would be happy to work with the councilman to try to give him assurances and maybe memorialize an agreement in some way, to give those assurances that we're hearing the concerns about from you and, uh, Commissioner Dweck, uh, because there really was no intention of, like I said before, a Trojan horse of any sort. We, we do have a very ample C-eight zoning right now, uh, to accommodate, uh, a very large building with a mixture of commercial uses, not the least of which is automotive, which is the largest car dealership in New York City that's making this application. We could certainly put a C-eight zone to use better than anybody else. Uh, but we're not here for that. So we are trying to give you the assurances that we're not doing that. I'll work with the councilman to give him more assurances. Uh, there is no way in the zoning, we don't, your, uh, commission does not do restrictive declarations anymore, although we have been begging to get them back in play. Uh, we, we'd be happy to, so we can make deals, uh, but, uh, we understand, uh, why you don't do it, so.
Thank you very much. Shall we go to Commissioner Gold on the Zoom?
Hey, Eric, so not to beat, uh, the dead horse, but I guess, you know, what I think might be helpful for us is to understand a little bit better why, um, we're asking for this much parking. And also, will this be a paid parking facility, or, um, is this really just for the neighborhood?
Uh, it'll probably end up being paid as most of these developments are around the city. Obviously, when you buy or rent an apartment, uh, your, your negotiation usually involves some sort of value being given for the parking space, whether or not it's built into the purchase price and the rental, you know, it's, it's usually an upgrade. Uh, the, the commercial will be provided free. Uh, there will be no paid parking for the commercial. And, uh, there is no intention to have, uh, any sort of public parking lot there. So it's not as if people are gonna be coming in and parking their cars there from around the neighborhood. It's meant to accommodate, uh, the residents that live within the building. So, yeah, they will probably be paying, uh, through their lease or through their, uh, ownership. And, uh, the commercial users, uh, will be, the users themselves will have free access to the parking, whether or not it's built in to the lease deal with the, uh, the tenant themselves, that's another story. But you won't be pulling in to go get a hamburger and paying to park if there's a burger shop in there or something.
Got it. But it's, it's a significant number of spots relative to the, the, uh, number of units. So a lot of that, presumably, is for the commercial side. Um, so just, you know, as I said, if, if you can give a little bit of the genesis of what was the thinking behind the, you know, asking for such-
Actually, yeah, actually, it's not for the commercial. It's for the residential, the parking. Uh, and it would, it's anti, uh, anti-logical. Most people would think it's, it's for the, the commercial. The neighborhood over there is, is a very tight-knit community, and it's got a very strong local retail base. Uh, there is tremendous demand. It's only, we're only providing thirty-six thousand square feet. I'm looking at him on the, on the screen there. I should look at all of you. Uh, there is only thirty-six thousand square feet of commercial space. So the additional, uh, about two hundred spaces that we're providing, a hundred and fifty spaces, are all meant for the residential tenancies, which, as I mentioned before, are anticipated to come with cars because that's the percentage to the conversation Commissioner Bozorg and I are having. It's the current trend. Uh, but I can understand your, all of yours, or what I'm hearing, the desire to plan for the future and almost, uh, you know, the father knows best sort of mentality that, you know, although this is what's going on today, uh, in the future, there'll be a, a different time, and, uh, that's what you need to keep your eye on. So we're happy to engage in that conversation from both sides.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, I would just let, lend my voice to, um, the concern on, on the parking. But I appreciate it, and thank you for the presentation and the answers.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rampert?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned the commercials gonna lead into that. Uh, you say thirty-six thousand. Do you have any potential tenants that they were looking at? Is it gonna be more oriented towards medical or?
Uh, no, actually, they've been talking to a couple of restaurants. I'm sure you've all seen, there's a tremendous demand for restaurants these days. They are the saving grace of New York City retail, I think, right now. Uh, so they've been talking to one restaurant that would, is interested in maybe taking about fifteen thousand square feet. Nice-sized restaurant, family restaurant for people to go to. Uh, the other space they're hoping to get, shoemakers, a card store, a deli, a, a gift shop, uh, just local, very, things you can't buy on Amazon. That's what they're, they're looking for. Uh, so we don't, we're not, Staples is not coming back, that's for sure. Uh, so it's gonna be local retail.
And just one last question. I, I know you said you're gonna, you're working on a plan to create more three bedrooms. So currently you have two hundred and thirty-one units proposed?
Yes, correct.
So what are you projected to be at once you can create more three bedrooms?
Uh, gee, that's a good question. Frankie, do you know, you, on the plans you've been working on to, to create more three bedrooms? Do you know what the, we're two hundred and thirty-one now. Do you know what the total unit count will be after you're done adding laundry units?
Right. We already did one scenario where we're down to two hundred and eleven units, and that introducing all three bedrooms and reduce, and we got that by reducing the ones and the studios. The studios right now are limited. I think the last scenario, we have about four studios per floor and, um, eight one-bedrooms per floor, and the rest are all twos and threes. So definitely more, um, larger units for the community. And, um, it's so, I think we're playing around with an idea now with a, where we're going down to about a hundred and eighty-something units, where we're really maxing out twos and threes, but that becomes dangerous because three-bedroom units are a lot more expensive. So we're kinda trying to find that medium, but right now I think the happy one is about two hundred and eleven units, down from what the initial- Two hundred and thirty-one, right.
So you, you have about a fifty-unit spread between where he's, doesn't really wanna be and where he thinks he should be. So, um, two hundred and thirty versus two twenty versus one eighty.
Thank you.
Or two ten, excuse me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yeah, one last question for me. Um, when you provide us with the, the total new proposed distribution, could you also give us the size of each one of the apartments?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, with that, we thank you all for your, your presence here today and for your, uh, answers to the questions. We'll look forward to the follow-up. Uh, and, um, we are gonna go to, uh, those who have signed up to testify. I believe they are all on Zoom, and we're gonna see who is in the room. And I'm gonna, um, look for Frank Mason, Harold Beard, and Logan Fairs, and I'm gonna see who's there. Madam Secretary?
So Frank is-
Oh, Frank's here.
And Harold will be in person, and Logan will-
Come on up, Frank. Mr. Mason, welcome. I'm sorry. I, I didn't, I didn't know you were here in the room. Whenever you're ready. You got three minutes, and we're, we're glad to have you.
Three minutes? Okay. Good morning to all. I wanna thank you for allowing us to come at this time. I'm gonna be very brief. Uh, my name is Reverend Frank Mason. I am the senior pastor of the Christ Temple United Baptist Church in Coney Island. Also, I am an advocate for my community. I'm very concerned about the lack of affordable housing that has been made available to our community. In order to keep up with the growing needs of our community, we need more housing and a sincere interest and investments into our community. That's why I'm here to support the eighteen eighty, eighty-eight commun, uh, Coney Island Avenue project. The eighteen eighty, eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue project has the potential to be a real game changer in our community. This project has many community benefits, including retail jobs, opportunity, affordable housing, options that will help generate revenue for the small businesses and force the new economic growth, which is a step in the right direction. We need to start and create developments in our community. This project checks all the boxes and helps improve the quality of life for the whole community. I'm confident that the eighteen eighty, eighty-eight Community Coney Island Avenue project will be a blessing to our growing community, and I am in full support of it. On the behalf of myself and the Christ Temple United Baptist Church, we support the rezoning of the eighteen eighty, eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue project, and I'm asking for your consideration and approving it. And I would like to thank all of you for the opportunity to be able to come and testify on the behalf of the Affordable Housing Project.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're delighted you're here, and thank you for your time and for your attention and, uh, for your, uh, your testimony. We appreciate it. Um, thank you. I'm going to, uh, call up now, um, Harold Beard of Coney Island Cathedral. Welcome.
I'm Harold Beard, assistant pastor of Coney Island Cathedral. I'm here on behalf of my pastor, Bishop Wayland Hobbs, Jr. He's unable to make it, and I'm gonna read what he wrote. He says that, "I am Bishop Wayland Hobbs, Jr., senior pastor of Coney Island Cathedral of twenty-eight sixteen Mermaid Avenue in Coney Island, Brooklyn. I would like to express my unwavering support for the eighteen eighty, eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue project. Because of the lack of housing and the population outpacing the housing stock, I've always been excited to support projects that will bring housing and investment to the community to where my representatives work. I am writing this letter to support, in support of a suppos, proposal, eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue project because I believe this investment will benefit both residents and small business owners alike. This project is much more than just a development project. It will improve the quality of life for the whole community by creating additional re, re, uh, retail space, uh, job opportunities, and affordable housing, which is desperately needed in our community. Furthermore, it will also provide and bring additional revenue to the local small businesses, which is always a plus for giving, for growing and sustaining communities. Collectively, the assets this project will bring is appropriately given to the growth of the community and its experience. I ask that you stand with us as we support much more needed housing in our community and consider the positive impact of this project we have. Thank you."
Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here. Uh, and to finish us out, um, I, I don't know if we have Logan Fairs, uh, on Zoom?
Uh, Logan is not in the Zoom room.
Not in the Zoom room, okay. Um, well, then I will take this occasion to see if there's anyone else who wishes to be heard at this point on eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue rezoning project. We'll give a moment, see if anybody materializes here. Who are you asking it of? Would you be willing to take a question, sir? Come on back up. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for, for your testimony and for taking the time to come to our meeting and share your, your position with us. I was wondering if you can share a little bit about your congregation. Uh, where, where the, do the people in your congregation live? Tell us a little bit about, you know, what type of, where do they work? That would be extremely valuable for us.
Well, we are twenty-eight sixteen Mermaid Avenue, and, uh, we're a diverse community, and we're a diverse congregation. Uh, housing is really needed because we have members that are, how about that? That are actually living on top of one another. They're, they're, they're packed in because there's not enough housing for them. Uh, a, a young family is still living with their parents because of there's no housing. And then there's also, well, uh, it would also bring in the revenue for small businesses. That would help a lot for our community because it would also give our young- jobs opportunities to it. So this project would actually help community in a great way, it really would. I hope I've answered your question.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, wait, hold on a sec, Commissioner Dweck?
Yeah, qu- question for, do you know the proximity, the distance from your congregation to the, uh, proposed, uh, project?
In miles?
Miles, yeah.
No, I, it's not that far. Okay, I, I don't, I don't, just a estimate?
We can
We'll look it up.
About ten?
Ten miles? Oh.
About ten blocks.
About, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dweck. Um, with that, we will officially close the hearing on eighteen eighty to eighteen eighty-eight Coney Island Avenue. We thank you, uh, the applicant team and also those who, uh, came to be with us today. We appreciate, uh, your time and attention and certainly your willingness to, uh, invest in New York City and do something, uh, uh, i- important. Um, let me, uh, ask, uh, Madam Secretary if there's other business before the commission today?
No, Chair, graphic, there is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written, written testimony online by solving this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal, through DCP's website or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, one-twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one-zero-two-seven-one.
Thank you very much and as a parting, um, uh, thought, I just wanna thank the members of the commission, it's been an absolute pleasure getting to work with you all, uh, in this first year for many of us and continued year for some of you, uh, um, I, I think we should all feel very proud of the work that we have accomplished together, certainly the agency for all of its efforts, uh, in making sure that we're prepared and ready and advancing important things in the city. Uh, to all of you and your families, uh, whatever you celebrate, I wish you all the very, very best, uh, for a warm, happy, healthy, peaceful holiday season and to all those who are watching, the same to you. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.
Thank you.[1789.21]